Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Village Council meeting of Monday, February 27, 2023. Order. The village clerk is absent this evening, so the village manager will call the roll. Commissioner Reed.
Mr.
Commissioner Wade.
President.
Commissioner Milovich Walters.
President.
Commissioner Polk.
Mayor Mahoney.
Mayor.
I'd like a sustain for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have in your packets this evening a draft of the minutes from our previous meeting. Questions, comments, or suggested changes? If not, I would seek a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Still moved, second?
Hearing a motion of second, will the clerk-manager please call the roll? Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney. Yes, and motion carries consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and were enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, to approve payment invoices on the warrant list dated February 27, 2023, in the amount $66,312.48. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved, second?
Hearing a motion of second, will the clerk-manager please call the roll? Commissioner Polk.
Commissioner Wade.
Yep.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney. Yes, and motion carries any items of old business to be brought before the council. Hearing none, we'll move to our agenda. Item to consider, PC 2022-02, an application filed by Woo and Tran Pelus Park LLC requesting approval of the following. Number one, a modification to approve commercial plan development in the B1 Limited Retail Business District pursuant to Chapter 1274.05. Number two, commercial construction landscaping review pursuant to Chapter 1461. Commissioner Wade.
Just real quick, Mayor. The subject property is owned by one limited retail business district and is improved with a Woo's House restaurant with accessory parking lot. Subject property contained a vacant restaurant that was improved and occupied by Woo's House through approval of a commercial plan development in 2019, ordinance 2019-16. Site currently contains 93 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to add 73 additional parking spaces on the site, 63 new spaces to the east, and 10 new spaces near the building. And, thank you.
Okay. The petitioner would like to make a presentation for us, please.
Good evening, thank you for having us. My name is Marcia Owens. I'm an attorney with Hanigman LLP in Chicago. I represent the applicant. Before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to take a minute to recognize the members of our team that are also here tonight. Michael Wu, the ownership. The architect, Scott Schalvis, with Architectural Studio Limited. Our engineer and surveyor, Mike Rogina, with Rogina Engineers and Surveyors. Our traffic engineer, Chris Hutchinson, with Tera Engineering. And did Rob, here's Rob. Our ecological consultant, Rob Van Herrick, with NCAP. The request tonight is to get approval for a major change to the commercial PUD. Our focus of the presentation tonight is not to rehash the prior meetings that we've been to, but to kind of focus on what our changes are to the site plan, give you an overview and how we fit within the standards for the commercial PUD. So the changes that were made to the site plan from the one that was presented at Plan Commission, we've removed the variance request, and you'll see by the change in the site plan, there was one request to remove or not put landscaping on one of the islands. Due to our slight design change, we've been able to take that one off the table. We also reduced the number of parking spaces. The site's been revised to reduce the requested number of spaces by nine total spaces. This reduces 13 spaces in the second parking lot that's being proposed, and increases four spaces near the building. So this adds a total of 73 spaces to the 93 spaces that exist today. And then, with the new design, we were also to save, able to save, two additional oak trees of 33 inches in diameter and above, in addition to two that were already being saved on the site. So all of the oak trees of, I believe, 30 inches or greater are being saved with the design. And then, last but not least, we will also reduce the length of the retaining wall on the eastern side, so that it doesn't go as far south as it did on the last proposal. So here's a better picture. The area that's being added for the new parking lot is this area here. A portion of this has already been cleared, and it's the existing detention pond that sits today. This will be filled in with an underground stormwater vault, which I'll have a picture of further into the presentation. The retaining wall is on the north and east side. Here's where you can see where it's been shortened, so that it doesn't go as far south. And then, we reduced parking in this area in order to preserve the oak trees that were sitting in this pond. So in order to maintain the canopy for their long-term survival, we had to go out a significant diameter in order to save those trees. The access way exists today, and then the additional spaces along the building are the ones that are right up in this area. It's right up, right up in that area. This is just an aerial from the corner of La Grange Road of how the site sits today. You can see the proposed new parking area. It's this area here that's partially cleared for a detention pond, and then it will go a little bit further east. And then, this just blows up the new diagram, so that you can see a little bit better the parking layout, and see the trees that are being saved here and then the retaining wall. In accordance with the comprehensive plan for the village, this property was slated in the La Grange Park corridor, which was slated for commercial development. It was considered the primary commercial corridor, and the best opportunity for large-scale commercial development at the time that that plan was put into place. In addition, commercial sites are required to have adequate and convenient parking, easy vehicular site access and circulation, and to be developed to maximize revenue of the village. We think these are all things that this project has done, and with the new parking lot, will make it easier for customers to get in and out and provide the parking that is needed. And then, also, a key component of the comprehensive plan was to preserve natural features of the village. So by saving the large trees that are on-site, and having literal or no impact to the endangered species, we think those are also in line with the plan. So one of the standards for the commercial PUD is the public welfare. Parking lot has been designed to create no stormwater impact on adjacent property. So, consistent with the design today, the stormwater will run to the east, onto an adjacent residential parcel that is owned by the same owner, to the creek, and then the creek runs south. The same stormwater flow will occur that's already in place today. This is a picture of what the underground storm trap system will look like when it's designed. This is a similar system as to what will be installed here. The same storm trap system has been used in the following locations in the area, and a number of other locations, but we wanted to highlight the ones that were nearby, particularly the metro station in Pelus Park. And our engineering group also used the system, the one in Tinley Park, that's why that's listed, the John Bannister Elementary School. Maintenance of the underground detention system will be done by a national company by the name of Aqualis. At this point, it's still too early for us to get a proposal for the maintenance, but that will include inspections of the structure, removal of sediment, vacuuming, and high-pressure wash. The orange areas that are located and shown on the plan are where, to the extent that there's heavy snowfall, proposed locations where snow would be piled, so that it doesn't interfere with access drives, keep the access drives clear, and traffic circulation within the lot. Also important to the public welfare under the commercial PUD, we wanted to highlight the tree removal plan. The red arrows point to the four large oak trees on-site that will remain. The yellow trees that are Xed out will be removed, those are all dead trees, and then the orange trees are the ones being removed. And we did a graph, so that you could see the condition of those trees. Of the 41 trees being removed, only nine are in good condition, 10 are dead, three are in poor condition, 13 are in fair condition, and six are in good condition, but they're cottonwoods, which is considered an undesirable. Right. We will also be adding back significant landscape plantings with this design. The one thing to note here is that our last landscape plan had about 57 trees, and we've increased the buffering, increased the amount of landscaping to now at 90 trees. Of this, 28 would be canopy trees, maple, hackberry, honey locust, Kentucky coffee, swamp oak, bald cypress, and American linden. 55 evergreen trees, including red cedar and white pine, seven understory trees, jeopardy for eastern red bud. And then, in addition to the trees, there'll be a variety of shrubs, grasses, vines, perennials, and turf grass. The next PUD standard was impact on other property, and we wanted to highlight that the property here, the commercial property, neighbors only the Fitzjoy Farm. So you can see here that it's surrounded by La Grange Road, McCarthy at the south. This is a residential lot that's under common ownership, and then the farm actually has a 50-foot strip between Woo's property and the neighboring residential property. This residential property, my client has also committed to the village, that he would restrict that as a no-build, conservation easement, dedicated to the village, do something to the extent that the village wanted to ensure that there was going to be no further development to the east on that parcel. In terms of the impact on public facilities and resources, we do not anticipate any plan changes. There won't be any changes to public utilities. The access drives are already in place for other public facilities. The stormwater detention, as we discussed, will be from a depressed pond that's there now into the underground vault system, and the lighting that will be installed will be similar to the same downward lights that are installed on the rest of the property. Those can also be put on some sort of sensor or timer, either motion-activated or light-sensitive, so that those go off and don't create additional glare for neighboring properties. In terms of the archaeological, historical, or cultural impact, there were three species that were originally identified as possibly being located on this property. The first was the dragonfly. That has been found that this location is more than one and a half acres from the critical habitat, so there's, the activities here should not affect anything with the dragonfly. The rusty patch bumblebee, if the work is performed prior to April 1st for the tree removal, which would be our goal, were approved, there would be no disruption of that species. And then, same with the northern long-eared bat. It's roosting and foraging occurs between April 1st and November 1st. So if we can get a permit and get trees down, assuming we have a positive vote tonight, there would be no impact there either. Parking and traffic. So this is something we spent considerable time. An additional parking study was conducted prior to this meeting. From about January 20th to April 2nd, there was a new study done. The results of that were, or the reason for doing that study was really to see from August to September, August of Sept-, or September of last year, when the original study was done for this project, if the parking had decreased, increased, if the newness of the restaurant had worn off, what was kind of going on with the lot. So we had cameras out there for a period of about two weeks. Traffic engineer spent a couple of weekends counting cars, and these were his primary observations. So on weeknights, the Monday through Thursday nights, typically about 40 to 65 cars. So that can be handled in the existing lot that's there today. The weekends, however, were an entirely different situation. The total vehicles on the weekends exceeded the current parking by anywhere from 16 to 72 vehicles. He observed carryout customers, about five to 10 at a time, parking on the shoulder on McCarthy Road, kind of running up the hill, getting their carryout, running back to their cars. And the valet also got backed up. At one point, there was about a 30-minute wait to drop off your car, which backed up the traffic throughout the parking lot and onto McCarthy Road. So we had a couple of videos, but it doesn't affect doing property. So. But we can see just from the pictures, this is the right and right out, which is the westernmost entrance to Woo's House, the one closest to La Grange Road. The cars here are parked along the shoulder, there's cars parked here. You can see the taillights of cars that are waiting to turn left into the further east lot, and then you can see the cars coming out this way. You can also kind of tell within the parking lot that there's a number of cars that are sort of parked outside, they're parked in the driveways. The valley has stacked cars multiple places on-site to try to accommodate traffic. Similarly, here, this is the full access drive, which is the easternmost drive. You can see the car here that's waiting to make a left, there's cars here, and you can see where the traffic is backed up all the way to the eastern drive, so that it's already starting to line up on McCarthy Road. This is just another picture of the full access drive, where you can see where the cars are kind of trying to make left turn and right turn, and at the same time creating some parking issues, because the parking is backed up. There were also cars that couldn't back out of their spaces because of the line of traffic kind of waiting to get into the valet. The next standard is adequate buffering. So as I mentioned earlier, along the east and north sides of the property, there'll be a retaining wall. The retaining wall was designed so that no section of the wall is more than eight foot tall. This will be fully landscaped, as I mentioned, and was designed to kind of blend in with the natural habitat surrounding it. This is a view looking from the southeast, so if you're at McCarthy, you're on McCarthy Road, kind of looking into the parking lot to the northwest, I think it would be, that's what the view would look like. And then, this is a rendering of the retaining wall that will face the farm on the northern side. And I've got a couple of pictures as we get further in that will show that this retaining wall kind of backs up to the back of the barn area. This is a picture from the east. This is the first residential house to the east from Woo's House. So you can see that there's significant foliage wooded area between this home and the restaurant, both with the residential lot that the Woo's own, the 58th Strip is wooded, and then there's another lot that's wooded with this residence. These photos were taken, you know, less than a month ago, so you can see the leaves aren't on the trees, but if the foliage was in, you know, during the spring and summertime, early fall, it would be even more difficult to see the restaurant. In terms of appearance, the new parking lot design is anticipated to blend with what's there now. This is the current lot design. And then, this just gives a visual, we wanted to show that the limits of the new parking lot here, the limits of the new parking lot here are behind the barn. So the corner of Fitzjoy's barn comes right here. These are two large concrete storage containers that are about 10 feet tall, are used for manure piling. So in terms of anyone looking from this direction, if you're standing on the ground, these would be 10 feet, so you might be able to see the top of the retaining wall in the corner, but a good portion of that will be blocked by the structures that are located on the farm. And this is just another video. So you can see those two concrete structures are here, end of the parking lot. Where we were would be about in this area. So there's an entire, you know, wooded area before there's any residential. Similarly, coming from this direction, the farm sticks out and has improvements coming from this direction before you would get to the proposed parking lot. And then, last but not least, we just wanted to put up a slide to show a few of the Yelp reviews from our customers, to see that they have also noted in their comments that parking is an issue. So these are from different time periods. The one at the bottom is from May of last year, parking situation needs to be addressed. The top left is from September of this year. Nice big place, but self-parking is at a premium, they need a bigger lot. And then, the one on the right is just from February 4th of this year, parking can be brutal. So that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you have, or after the public comment.
Thank you very much. So I think the way we'll handle this is we'll take public comment, and then after the public comment, if you want to address anything that's said during the public comment, you have an opportunity to do so. Thank you. So, to begin with, there were a few comments at the last meeting. One comment concerned Woo's parking at the Captor Administrative Center. I understand from the chief of police and from Woo's, the parking lot at the administrative center is infrequently used. However, Woo's has provided certificate of insurance after the last Plan Commission meeting in December. In addition, we, in consultation with our risk management team at the Illinois Risk Management Agency, also known as Irma, we have provided a form that has been provided to Woo's, indemnifying the village from any and all liabilities relating to the Woo's use of the parking lot. So, public comment. While this is not a public hearing, we are going to receive public comment regarding the revised Woo's proposal. We will ask anyone from the audience to identify herself or himself and to make her comment. We would ask the petitioner to take notes on any comments asked, and the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond after all public comments are made. I also remind you that this is your opportunity to make public comment, not a question-and-answer session. If the petitioner, if the petitioner would like to address your comment, or anyone from the council would like to respond to your comment, they may do so after the public comment portion of the meeting concludes. So with that, I would take public comment.
Hello. My name is Sue Burek. I live the first house behind Woo. And what I want to know is, they take a picture of that property from the trees, because nobody would see it. The way the picture was taken is like so, the elevation was so high, and yes, you can't see anything, because there's snow, and there's branches, and all of those branches are mine. I mean, I let that property be wild, because I live in Pelus Park. Look at your plaque. It's, you know, pastoral, rural, splendid, and there's a big oak on it, and we should respect that. We should respect our community. I moved here because it was unique, and it wasn't parking lots all over, and now somebody wants to destroy it. We live here, the people here live here, and we love it, just the way it is. I believe that Mr. Woo should have considered this before he made the giant building that he built. My husband was at every single meeting, he asked all the questions, but nowhere was it said that number one, he was going to build a house, or number two, he was going to build another parking lot. I'm, I understand that we need business. Pelus Park has no business, besides that Jewel and that Francesca's, but you can't destroy or ignore us. We, we have a right to live where we are, and to be happy that way. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Hi, my name is Angela Roderick. I've been a Pelus Park resident since 2019, but I've spent most of my childhood visiting Pelus Park. And I'm currently a member of the Planning Commission, so I've spent a lot of time reviewing this material. I've actually enjoyed a lot of the exposure to the process, and I've spent a lot of time listening to people's comments, and listening to subject matter experts. So when I first read the proposal, my concerns aligned with many of the public comments during the meeting, and first and foremost, I felt a great deal of responsibility to preserve and protect the endangered species that had been identified as potential inhabitants of the area of the. that had been identified as potential inhabitants of the area of the, of the expansion. But if you look at the maps of where these species are, they're actually all over Payless Park and in our backyard. So if they're in Woo's property, they're also in our property. And I don't think it's his responsibility alone to protect them. So I, I believe conservation is everyone's responsibility, but I also understand it's a choice. And we really can only expect people to do the legal minimum. And that's why we have laws and things like that. But the real passion and leadership to move the needle will come from individuals within the park to motivate others to do the right thing. And I heard a lot of enthusiasm and passion that was shared during the meeting, and I hope that that's not lost. I know the people who spoke about advocating for these endangered species should continue to lead by using their properties as examples of safe dwellings for these species. And the benefit here is if we're all doing our part to protect, then necessary projects like Woo's expansion would dramatically have less impact to these environmental species. And this is how we can create lasting change within our community. The second concern I had is about how this expansion will affect flooding and stormwater retention. There's a lot of comments on that and a lot of misunderstanding of like the concept of how this works and if it will increase or decrease any of the volume of water flow into Mill Creek. But I think one of the things that I learned in the last meeting, and it was really unclear, is that the structure itself, the design is chosen by the engineers, but it's reviewed and approved, the sizing and the retention volume, by the Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. And if we feel like that's not sufficient for our community, it's bigger conversation that I don't know is within scope of like this type of project. And it's probably a very large effort. And so, you know, the proposal, the lawyer mentioned, is not something new or risky. And again, to the village, the most important part about these designs is implementation and inspection, and that's the village's responsibility, to make sure that's carried out correctly. But I do, since I have your ears, I do want to emphasize that this is a growing concern in our community. And I hope that the village and the commission takes every opportunity that they can to improve our village code and also just share resources. There's a lot of federal and state level grants that can, that we can offer to our residents to take part in the solution, because this is another great example that the burden on each individual property is eased by everybody sharing in the solution. And that would, and my main point here is that like eventually, if we're all not participating in the solution, then we will need costly infrastructure changes, which, you know, no one also wants to pay for. My third concern, and obviously one of the most important, is about cutting down trees to accommodate the project. And I really appreciated the adjustment in the plan to preserve the oldest oak trees. These specimens in particular have some of the largest impacts in carbon sequestration, water retention, biodiversity preservation, all things I just mentioned, you know, and talked to before, and also visual interest. And more than any young tree could contribute to the landscape, you know, within our lifetime. So, you know, I know that Woo's tried to get rid of all their variances, but the discussions that we had and the fact that you guys listened and make changes, I, I really respect that because if we didn't have that opportunity, then we could have just had something much less creative and interesting. Lastly, because I'm on the commission, I feel like it's partly my responsibility in a leadership position to make sure that we're having civil discourse. And there were some comments that I felt were a little bit like, you know, off color. That didn't sit well with me. So, Mr. Woo, I believe that you have the right to express your culture as you see fit because it's your culture and yours alone, your experience. I don't believe that the people of Payless Park think your culture is quote unquote like a theme park. I think it's very, you decide what's authentic to you. And whether or not they support this proposal, I do believe the silent majority of people in Payless Park are more mature and respectful of cultural differences than that comment might suggest. So I do apologize for that misrepresentation of our community. And with that, I want to say that during the planning commission meeting, I did try to give Mr. Woo and his team a really hard time. I tried to turn over stones and ask a lot of questions, spent a lot of time with the material, and they responded respectfully and thoughtfully with design changes, documentation, redoing, engineering studies, and I support their proposal.
Good evening. My name is Grace Donovan. I'm a lifelong resident of Payless Park. First, I'd like to address something. Last meeting, the planning commission meeting in December, Ms. Roderick had said something how she couldn't go against her neighbors. I'm one of those neighbors. So I'm going to start with a comment that she just made, which was about referring to Woo's as looking like a theme park. I resent the fact that she just apologized on behalf of me for saying that comment. Nowhere did I relate it to his culture. So perhaps Ms. Roderick has some implicit bias that's coming out. So I just want to set the record clear. I respect Mr. Woo. I respect the American dream. I am married to somebody who's a product of the American dream. So that is not why I'm here today. I'm here because I oppose Mr. Woo's expansion because it is not what he initially told us he wanted. I wasn't at those initial hearings, so I can't quote them exactly. What I do know is stuff that I researched once I decided to get involved last November, November 2022, in East Chicago. So I thought it was interesting, these meetings start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I love that. And I love it because we should have a love for our country. Someone else had a love for our country. Former United States Navy Admiral Grace Hopper. I don't know if you guys know who she is. She passed away. She used to always say a quote, and it was, "It's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is to get permission." Now, she was a pioneer in computer programming. When you look her up, you understand why this quote applied to her career. That's also why we are here tonight. Because it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission. That's Mr. Woo's MO. And unfortunately, that's not an MO that Payless Park should abide by. And as I said to the planning commission in November, I'm sorry, December, we know this because he did it again in Naperville. And I'm sure you guys have watched the three-hour hearing that Ms. Roderick referenced. I'm sure you guys all did your homework, saw a lot of the commentary, but I am going to reiterate it because some new people are here. Naperville, there's a proposal for a new restaurant. And he had filed a proposal for a variant from Naperville's requirement, which requires, and I'm just going to look at my notes, that there are 10 parking spots for every 1,000 square foot. His restaurant is approximately going to be 16,263 square feet, which means he would need 163 parking spots. He wanted to proceed with 147 because there was also reciprocal agreement in place with export fitness that gave him 50 parking spots. So that 50 parking spots would get him to 197 parking spots. Now, the capacity of that restaurant is really interesting to note. I watched the hearing there, and if I'm quoting Ms. Owens directly, she said it's about 400. So Mr. Woo, a savvy businessman, I don't think anyone can argue with that, built a restaurant with a capacity of about 400 for a population in Naperville for 149,000. Payless Park's population, and I just confirmed these numbers before we started, is 4,900. Capacity, according to these new filings, in this restaurant, 380. So Mr. Woo, again, very savvy businessman, about to open his sixth location, actually told us at the beginning, back in 2019, I want a 380-capacity restaurant for a parking lot that only parks 93 spots. Well, we took him at his word. And my father, who you will hear from tonight, always told me, your word is your bond. Now, I don't believe that Mr. Woo actually wanted to stand by his word. I think Mr. Woo knew what he was going to do at that time when he presented that proposal. I know, Christian Wade, I don't believe you were on the committee at the time. Everybody else, I think you were. I'm sure you're going to get asked this question a lot. Would you have voted in favor of that proposal had you known the chaos that Ms. Owens just showed you in those photos? Because that's all that is, that's chaos. And that's chaos that Mr. Woo fully knew was going to happen. Now, Mr. Woo wants to act like this was an unforeseen circumstance, and he wants to ask for forgiveness now. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't predict this, but it's really necessary. There's safety concerns. The parking lot's overflowing. But let's go back to Naperville. 197 parking spots. That's why he doesn't need those extra spots in compliance with Naperville ordinance. So are we supposed to expect that we're going to be back here to request 190 parking spots? It's 166 today. 380-capacity restaurant. So let's say, okay, 380, 20, less than 400, 190. Are we going to keep coming back here and keep granting him forgiveness because he did not want to ask permission? Now, in support of why I hope you deny this motion, you have to look at what they submitted. And what they submitted is another parking study that was talked about in the planning commission meeting in December. And I know we have some lawyers here. So if you go to page 61 on that parking study, you'll see that it says, quote, "Based on the data collected during our observation, this total number of spaces should accommodate the parking needs for restaurant patrons and staff." Well, in law, use the word "should" versus "shall," you have a whole different interpretation, right? "Should" is a recommendation. "Should" means probable, not definite. If you use "shall," "shall" is definite. It's ending at 166. But no, that is not what's in this study. It goes on to say, however, with the additional employee parking, the lot would be close to capacity on busy winter month, weekend nights, and the restaurant may want to consider continuing to request that employees carpool or shuttle to work. That "should" is a foreshadowing of future issues. How is Mr. Woo, and I respect his effort to try to get employees to work with him, but how is he going to have these employees commit to carpooling? Who's to say that Andrew wants to carpool with Melissa on Tuesday? Is that going to be employee contractual agreement? And even so, is that going to actually fix the problem? The problem is, Mr. Woo knew what he was doing. He's gotten away with it before. He's asked for forgiveness and not permission. Again, my father told me, your word is your bond. You are all sitting up there because you took a word. You gave your word to the Payless Park residents to listen to us and to hear us and to hear our concerns. Mr. Woo is not a resident here. He's profiting off of us, but he's not a resident. We've got a room full of people here, some in favor of Mr. Woo, and a lot that are not. It has nothing to do with Mr. Woo. It's not personal, but this is our, this is our lives. This is our home. And as Ms. Bierich said, you, you should listen to us. So we ask that you keep your word, and you make Mr. Woo keep his, and you deny his request.
Do we, do we have others who would like to speak?
Of course.
Yeah.
I can't speak like a woman. But I agree 100% with what she said. Excuse me, I'm an emotional talker.
Um, I think Mr. Woo has to be responsible for building a building that cannot accommodate the people he wanted to. There's no way we're in a poor house. We knew that. You build according to what your capacity is going to be. And you did. Not if you give them problems now, he happens to do it. I'm against it.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Hi, Village Council, how are you?
I know that these people have done a lot of their homework. I mean, she may be an attorney. So I'm coming here with a very small amount of information. But what I do know is that you guys have a good restaurant, and there is no other places to eat in Payless Park. It's close to my house. I've lived here for 27 years. So it's a nice place to go eat, and it's nice to have a restaurant. And, you know, the way I look at it, if, if Mr. Woo owns the property, he should have some right to do what he wants to do. If we wanted to see it, the first time I saw it tonight was the, the puffers zone between the houses and this commercial facility. That's, that's a lot. I know if I lived where she lived, I'd probably have concerns too. But that's basically about it in a nutshell. It's a nice place to go eat, and that's it. It's nicely equipped. And, you know, parking was a problem. I know that they tried parking on the streets, and that was curtailed because you can't do that. And that was unfortunate. I think that he's probably trying to reach out and try to get a solution that he's going to cost. What is that kind of a situation? It's really not impacting that area to the east anymore than it was already impacted. You know, it's just underground. I see a lot in another town that I do some work for, and they're doing those, you know, underground water storages, and it's really not changing any of the, anything. And then from what, the impact from all the beautiful trees are going to do, I think it's impossible. And I'm sorry, I guess I was tired of the room here, but anyway, that's my thing. Thanks very much.
Anyone else like to address the council?
My name is John Donovan, and I was in Payless Park for the 330 plus years. I was going to wait until a little bit later, but we're here instantly. Talking about what I was just talking about. I've been at every one of these meetings, okay? Seen every one of those proposals. I tell you what, this is good, it's good. It's the third version of the same thing I've seen every time. Just keep chopping it down a little bit, a little bit. Why didn't you come in with this the first time? Figured you could add what you could get. Before I get into what I actually want to say, I want to say something.
Ms. Donovan, you have to speak.
I take very big offense to what Ms. Roderick said earlier. After she voted twice to deny the proposal, she knows what the context was of those comments, okay? Shame on you for doing that. Shame on you, okay? And shame on this committee for having us come here again and having everyone have to take off work early to get here and do this. This has been denied twice by the people you have appointed. Do you not trust their word and their judgment? This should be put to rest. I wa, I looked at the report. I thought, I figured I'm not going to talk about it. But there are two things that I saw, because I don't want to dignify it, quite frankly, all right? But two things I want to talk about, I want to talk about the tree. I raised the issue of the trees every time I've spoken, actually. I didn't really care for these smug comments in the second page where it said residents cared about one oak tree. It's not one oak tree. It's a lot of trees. It's big oak, it's the brush, it's all part of an ecosystem. I know we understand that here because we live in Payless Park. We appreciate our environment. We appreciate our trees, our yard, the wildlife. We do things, most of us, do things to enhance it. Not cut it down, not add concrete, not destroy what is a very serene nestled village in Cook County. Nothing like it anywhere else. But decisions like this, that's what changes it and ruins it. So I don't know, I heard you were on the, up on the council at the time, so I don't know how you would have voted or where you stand. I hope that you're looking at all your neighbors who are here. I hope you're listening to conversations. I hope you choose to vote and stand with us, the people who are your neighbors that live here. Ms. Walters, I hope you do too. Mary Moni, I hope you do too. I know you're, you're retiring. I appreciate your service and all that you've done. I hope that you, on the way out, don't say, hey, forget him, I'm done, so whatever. I'm going to sell this town out because he's dangled dollars in front of me. I'm gonna sell this town out because he's dangled dollars in front of us. He's dangled..." I'm sorry, Mr. Polk, was that funny? See, that's how we were treated at the Planning Commission hearings, too. See, everyone snickered. If you listen to the audio, and I hope everyone does, I hope you go and listen to how your government looks at you. You're a peon here. They're laughing at you, and you get to vote on April 4th with these same people that are literally looking at you smuggling. That's a shame, because everyone here has came respectfully to talk to you. So let me get back to the plan, all right? That's gonna destroy this nice little piece of property over there. And I'm gonna show some pictures, because I brought pictures too, okay? That little strip that you're talking about, sir? I'm gonna show you pictures of what the other little strip looks like by my property, filled with trash, beer bottles, their bags, their forks that go into my creek that flows all through the village. Every neighbor cuts under 123rd, they get that trash there. That's not fair to all of us. I go out and clean that. That's my yard. I work a full-time job. I drive back and forth three hours to do my job. I shouldn't have to be here defending my little nestled slice of peace. If it was your property, I'd be standing here with you. Because that's what neighbors do. And we're all neighbors, that's why we're here. See, Mayor Mahoney, when I talked to you at the Chili Cook Off, you told me it was three families that care. Said to you, "You better watch the tape again." This is more than anyone who has come out to this thing. It's growing. People realize what's happening here, okay? It's a problem. I ask one question in particular every meeting. Who else, what business in Payless Park have we allowed to put the underwater storage system and allow a business to manage it? I'm gonna ask for an answer. What business have you guys approved that for ever before? Who has the underwater storage system they're proposing in Payless Park? I saw hosted names not in Payless Park, a hosted names of institutions, not businesses, institutions, that are backed by organizations. Schools on that list, backed by my tax dollars, your tax dollars, the state, the school districts, everyone. I didn't see a single business in Payless Park. I asked that at every hearing, every meeting. So tell me now, because you told me and everyone at the last hearing, Mr. Mahoney, you were gonna have answers, and I've heard none. In fact, I heard you caveat that you weren't gonna answer questions again. You guys are holding public office. You should answer our questions. We're your neighbors. Forget that we're taxpayers and voters, we're your neighbors. I saw you at the Chili Cook Office, Walters. If I asked you about this right there, would you have told me you weren't gonna answer my question?
If you were respectful to me, I would have answered your question.
I thank you for answering me now, so let me ask you this question.
I'm not gonna answer questions.
What business has this? You just answered one, but you won't ask on the proposal in front of you.
This is not an open meeting.
That's fair. I appreciate that. I really do.
You guys should offer us something on it.
No other business has that tank in Payless Park. None. Zero. Okay? And you know that. It's why you don't want to speak to it, why you don't want to answer it, it's why the report doesn't mention it, it's why it points to everything else. Payless Heights is not Payless Park. Oak Lawn is not Payless Park. Why would I care if a high school, a public high school, can manage this water system? What happens when Mr. Wu leaves? Who's gonna manage it? Us, the taxpayers. Okay? I'll move on now. Mr. Polk, the Police Commissioner, my question for you. Why are people parking on our property without paying us? What is the value of a parking spot? Because we deserve the market rate for it. If he's using and he's getting a freebie, we should be getting that and reimbursing us. I heard a park proposal that we're gonna pay for. You had an opportunity to have private funding for it, but you, we're gonna pay for it. That money Mr. Wu's would be paying us could have paid for that park. It could pay for the extra cops that Commissioner Miller should have on his detail, okay? Full-time cops. When we're policing, we only have three police officers. When they're tied up at Mr. Wu's house, you only have one or two officers full-time patrolling your area. Mr. Miller, our chief, is a great chief. He does a hell of a job. He deserves that money, and you guys let him down and you let all of us down. That's money that he should have paid. In fact, we deserve back pay on it. You got it for free all this time? I want you to ask him for the back pay on it. I want you to get us what we are owed, because we just subsidized him for months. Months. Thank God a kid wasn't hit walking down that street. I walked that street all the time as a kid, 30 years. That is a travesty that we allowed that to go on. So I'm gonna ask a very simple question of all of you, and I know you're gonna just stare at me and treat it like you don't hold a public office and you don't owe me an answer. Oh, how are you gonna vote? Are you gonna vote with us, your neighbors, all the people who showed up, take off work, have come to these things and have asked you, have pleaded with you, have made all the points necessary for you to shoot this down? Your own Planning Commission, twice, even though I don't even know how honest they are, all right? Because I just saw that, but they voted down. You should stand with the people you appointed, trust their judgment. Deny this. Vote no. And don't keep us coming back to it. Put this thing to bed for good. I agree, he should have the right to use his property. He did. He came in and deceived all of us. He intentionally didn't tell us the truth. I lived next to the one in Evergreen Park. He put the business out next to him, it's a parking lot now. He knew it. He's done it time and time again. Don't fall for it. We are very good neighbors. Do not allow any of them to shortchange us that or pit us against each other, because I am telling you, he will be back again if not...
He's destroying.
Oh, in my pictures. Because we like this place, right? It's a beautiful, beautiful town. Look at the trash. It's all on the border from him. Garbage. They showed you beautiful area shots, right? This is what that parking lot actually looks like when you're down there on the ground. Those of us that live here know it, because we drive through it, just like we know, that's a very little thin border right there, but they get a little bit of miles and trees. Come on, guys. Garbage from his old construction that he's picked up. It's just trash, more trash, more trash. It all flows into the creek onto my property. You're not a good neighbor to pitch to it. It's all flowing over onto your property. Climb up that hill and look at all the trashes leaving on your property, okay? You're not a good neighbor. Shoot this down, because this... Shoot this thing down and vote it down, because this is about community and we stand with our neighbors. If you vote for this, you are voting against the people. You're voting against all of your residents. You are voting against the character of this town. You are voting against the environment. Just vote no. Do the right thing.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you all of you for coming. I'm Rhonda McCarthy, I live at 9002 West 121st Street. Mr. Reed, did I say something wrong? There's just been a number of times, I have to say, I heard what John said earlier, and then the first thing, I come up and introduce myself, and Mr. Reed's shaking his head. I don't know what he meant by that. Hopefully, it wasn't anything directed at me. I know you can't answer this question, but the first thing I want to ask is, who's C. Gable is? Is that still an employee with the Village of Payless Park?
What's the context?
There's an email address, C. Gable, C.G.A.B.L.E. at PaylessPark.org.
You haven't given me a context.
Well, that's where your Freedom of Information Request Act requests go to on the form on your website. And my understanding is that she's no longer with the village. So you have individuals submitting Freedom of Information requests on your form, and when you click the email, it goes to that email address. Just wondering how many people have submitted Freedom of Information requests that have gone unanswered because they go to C. Gable. So you don't have to answer anything more, but just maybe that's something you want to correct. I know this is not the first time that's been brought to your attention, because my council actually brought it to your staff's attention about a month ago. So for one month, you still have had Freedom of Information Request Acts going to, requests going to an incorrect email address. Now, if you dig a little deeper, you do see Lisa Boyle's information and the rest, but you have to look on. The form that makes it easy for residents to fill out or anyone requesting goes to C. Gable. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Do you have anything to say about this petition?
I do. Thank you, John, Mr. Mahoney. When, last time I was here, I asked some specific questions, and you addressed some of them at the beginning, but not all of them, so I'd like to ask them all again. So in regards to the parking of Wu using the overflow at Captor, taking some of their vehicles by the valet here, I specifically asked, were there any and all contracts, agreements, or other writings to include any of those things that were in agreement between the Village of Payless Park and Wu's? When did it start? When was the agreement entered into? When did it stop? Today, you said that it happened infrequently, so I would also like to ask, is it still When was the certificate of insurance provided, the actual date? And what are the dates on the certificate of insurance? Does it go from the beginning of the agreement to current? Does it run going forward? Again, I think that would have to do with, is it still occurring or not? Are there any and all records that reflect that we could see as residents in regards to if there is no agreement or if there was an agreement, when the termination of it is? Or is it something that Wu's will continue to use going forward by having their valet bring vehicles off-site here to the Captor building? And then I would also like to ask the question in regards to, is there any sort of monetary contribution by Wu's for utilizing parking space here? Early on, in some of the meetings, it was brought up that it could be a suggestion to have Wu's use Fitzjoy as some of the parking. And if my recollection is right, there was a discussion over possible, you know, payment to Fitzjoy for using those parking spaces. So I would like to ask the same, is if Wu's had, is, still is, continues to use any of the village parking lot, what was the payment structure? What was agreed upon? What was the contribution to the village? And hopes, you know, we could use it in another positive way. Thank you.
Hello? My name is Gino Rodriguez. I'm a resident of Payless Park, and I'm here to demonstrate my asking for, for my neighbors, the organization expansion of the parking lot. I moved here in 2018 primarily for the community of Payless Park, as he offered wildlife, solitude, all the trees. Did not move here for large restaurants like Wu's House. More under the pressure than in a village council that were thinking parking lots over preserving trees. I'm not saying that you do, because you'll find out. Vote. But I certainly hope not. Now, I agree with everything that's been said tonight by my neighbors against the expansion of the parking lot. I think they're spot on with the misrepresentation of the plans early on and everything else. And the only thing I'll add and just reiterate, it's already been mentioned, is that Village Council is a group of elected officials, elected by us, and have a simple mandate to represent our voices. And so we're all here clearly telling you, the majority of us, that we'd like you to reject this proposal. So I have faith that you all will do the right thing as a council and as our neighbors to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nancy Webster, and I live at 126 Commons Drive. I've been a resident of Payless Park for almost 50 years. Originally lived across from the forest preserves, and now I live in one of the townhouses. The question I have is, in reading the proposal, so I read the report on the technical report, my concern is, it's only three nights a week that they want to, that they need the overflow parking. The rest of the nights, it's maybe 20, 40, 50 people. So that's only three nights a week. It's not every night, it's not all year. In the report, they said it's only in the summer months. The other question I have is, somebody mentioned, I think it was Grace, the number of people, the number of parking, the number of seats that they have. And according to the Cook County Department, Cook County Regulation 11.2.6, for a facility, they're supposed to have one parking space for every three seats. And they have to have one parking space for every three employees. It would have required way more than the number of parking spaces that were approved when Wu's went in. So why was Wu's originally approved for the size of the facility they had when they didn't meet the Cook County Regulation for parking? So I just don't understand that. So that's a question that I have. And I also support my other neighbors. I live in Payless Park. I could have moved to another community when I left my home, but I decided to stay here because I love the nature, I love the trees, and I love the look of Payless Park. Also, in the morning, somebody, an attorney mentioned that the lights may go down, and she mentioned that at a previous meeting that I watched online. They do not go down now, because I travel that way every morning when I go to the gym. And the lights are on all night long, and I can't imagine what it must look like for the people who live in that area of the park. So are the lights going to dim or are they not going to dim? That's something I think it would be important, even if the expansion does not go forward.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Sure.
My name is Scott Donovan, live at 942 West 123rd Street. I've been here 30 years. I have to say that there are few of us here who have been at numerous meetings. This goes back to 2019, as it was said. I know none of you made all those meetings. I don't think any of you made any of those meetings, because I looked and I watched for the people. And I also came to all the appointments and meetings. None of you were there. You may have had a chance to watch the screen on TV, as I watched it again today. You see the replay. But what you don't see is the people here, the real people there, the 50 to 100 people in this room, who are almost all against this expansion and who are being worn out. They've come to every meeting. They've canceled dinners, they've rushed from work, they cancel vacations, and you're wearing them out. How many bites at the apple has Mr. Wu yet? You've had two Plan Commission meetings that voted four to nothing, notwithstanding what Angela said, and I'll address that in a minute. You have a staff report. If you saw the meetings, you would see that you had a staffer that was actually helping Wu's with their presentation, helping them with the computer. Is that the job of a Payless Park staffer? Are we too cozy? Have we lost our objectivity? Do we think it's our job to make Mr. Wu's business successful when there is a real question of the veracity and the integrity of the proposal that was submitted to us? Grace Donovan did an excellent job at the Plant Commission meeting and today of telling you, this is his MO. I said at the last meeting, "I hope my mother didn't raise a fool." And I hope I didn't vote for any fools, because we have someone who's taking advantage of us. I read the staff report. The staff report says that Wu's will enhance the property and the community. Is there anyone here who thinks their property is going up because Wu's is in our neighborhood? No. Either? Let me hear you. Yes or no? Is there a yes? There's not one person in this room that agrees with your staffer who wrote that. I don't know where he comes from with a report like this. We also have Mr. Wu, who in this report, is supposed to be able to make the case that he's a very good businessman. I think he is. I think he's an excellent businessman. I think he has a veracity problem. What he does is he tells you what he wants you to hear, and he puts forth what he needs. And they made an issue that they didn't need more parking than Hackney. And we gave it to them, you and we. We came to all these meetings, and everyone was at those meetings trusted you to make the decision. This is the bite at the apple he gets, not another and another. And that's what he's here to do again and again. And I will tell you something else. He told us, if I called up that slide or showed that piece of property residential behind us, he told us he was gonna be our neighbor. Build that dream house and live with us. Well, I see you at the Chili Fest. I don't see him. I don't see him at the Payless Park Players. I don't see him at any of the stores. He's not a neighbor. He's a bad neighbor. You know why? Those lights are on. I went to mass this morning. Six this morning, those lights are on, every light. And I resent, and Angela, you owe Grace Donovan a big apology, but when she said that day to talk about the lighting, she didn't say anything about the person. I could have said, it looks like a Pachinko parlor, because this morning, all those lights are out there around there. I ride by there at least two, three times a day. I see it. And to cast dispersion on this young lady as a member of the plant commission, you owe her a public apology now in front of everyone. And just the way you said that, you are 100% wrong. And you were the person at the plant commission who stood up and made the motion, and I watched the tape again today to see exactly what you said. And you said that this is not in the spirit of the community. And you know what? It's not in the spirit of the community. And you went further. You said, I couldn't vote for this because of what it would do to my neighbors. What changed? What changed? Yeah. What changed? A lot has changed. We're too close to Wu's. We're not objective. We have lost our objectivity. When you can let Wu's and everyone can act like they didn't know it. First of all, he was parking on the street and it was dangerous. He didn't care if someone came over the hill, was a kid in the car, babies, and hit the back of a car parked there. Joe Miller does a great job. He had to stop him from parking there. He'd still be parking on our street. He's a cowboy, and you're letting him get away with this. And you have a responsibility here. You may not think it, but we're watching the way people vote. We're not stupid. Maybe Mr. Wu thinks we're stupid. I don't think I'm stupid. I think that I kind of know what I have in mind. What I have in mind is to live in Payless Park. Payless Park that I found in this book, that talks about a village, a park, surrounded on three sides by forest preserves, that's something that Plan Unit Development talks about, something construction. What's next? Fitzjoy's, we're going to have a Walmart? Going to roll over for that? Are you going to stand up for the people in Tree City, USA? Are you going to vote for a concrete jungle? Falls at your court, and we'll all be watching. This is a bait and switch, if I ever saw one, and to put it more kindly, it's putting lipstick on a pig, because everything they've done, little change, little change, they're cute up there. They tell you how they save trees. They didn't save trees. They only are taking down four, less than they were taken down before. I hope you are smart enough to see through it. I hope that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
I'm Carol Anderson, and I've lived here for 75 years. I've seen a lot of change, and all I can say is, we love trees. Your emblem suggests that, and we are the tree city. And I know the people around that area of Wu's, they're concerned, but I just wanted to tell you, I live on 125th and 80th Avenue, and the east side of Payless are also concerned about that. It's not just the Donovan's and the people that are around there, but people here, and they are very upset, cutting down trees. People move into Payless Park, they cut down trees because they don't want to hear acorns falling on their roof. You know, please then, don't move into Payless Park, because this is a special community. We love it, and we don't want to move. So I hope you take this into consideration. We love Payless Park, and we support our neighbors from the east side, and we support you.
Hello, my name is Kayla Hanson. I'm a lifetime Payless Park resident. I just wanted to stand up and speak to you all that I don't think everyone in this room is on one side or the other. I think it's, you know, divided as any, you know, subject matter is. There's always two sides to the story. I personally have known Michael Wu since I was very young. He's a family man, he has children, he is a very kind individual. It's been a pleasure knowing him and his wife. And, yeah, I think, listening to this plan tonight, I think you guys have been going back and forth about this parking lot for a very long time, and it seems that he's taken, you know, all of your concerns into consideration. Yes, he's removing some trees, some healthy trees, some not healthy trees, but he is going to, you know, add biodiversity and other things into, you know, the area. So I don't think, you know, I think it's thoughtful, at the very least, so, yes.
Well, I'm going to close the public comment period unless anyone else has any further Does the petitioner want to respond to any of those comments?
I'm just going to ask the traffic engineer to address some of the parking and traffic concerns, if you could. I think that was, would be helpful.
Hello. Hello, my name is Chris Hutchinson. I am the parking study engineer for Wu's House. I will say that Terra Engineering and myself got involved after the initial proposal, so this is, we were brought in after there was a parking, realization that the parking was a problem. So we weren't involved upfront, but we're doing our best to solve the problem as it is now. So I wanted to address a couple of things. I know Grace pointed out the Naperville study, which obviously, that doesn't really have a bearing on this, but I think it's important for you guys to know that the project, so she mentioned, you know, they're providing 147 spaces, which was less than the 163 required by Naperville. With the agreement for 50 shared spaces, they're actually providing 197, which is more than Naperville wants them to do. And the calculations of how many spaces they needed were actually based off of our study here. Like, Mr. Wu is taking what he's learning here, and he's having us do studies for future sites that realize this is what the actual conditions are, so that when he plans his future restaurants, he can accommodate that parking. And in Naperville's case, he's providing over and above what they asked, because, you know, we're realizing similar size, a little bit bigger, you know, might need more than the 166 here, so they're providing 197, so. And as far as the should versus shall part of the report, you know, I want to point out, we've been out in the field five nights. We studied the parking lot July 15th of 2022, then January 20th and 21st, and then again on the 27th and 28th of this year. In all cases, even the craziest Saturday night, where there were, all the spaces filled, there were 40 cars parked within the property and not spaces in drive aisles, by the water tower, on the grass next to where the patio is. There were 40 cars there, there were 26 cars waiting in line. There were still a maximum of 160 vehicles waiting to park. There were 140 or so accommodated actually within the property that only is supposed to hold 93, and then they did have to bring 20 down here. That was the only night of the six that we've observed that they actually had to bring there. So of the six nights we've observed, there was only one where they actually brought cars to the village hall, and it was about 20. You know, the safety concerns have brought, you know, we, Mr. Donovan brought up people parking on the shoulder. Well, when you've got people waiting to turn in, left turn lanes, right turn on that shoulder, you've got people parking to get their carryout, because they can't get into the lot, you know, our calculations show that if they expand this lot to 166 spaces as proposed, all those people can pull right off the street, park their car, you know, and get out of that, the drive lanes there, and there will be extra spaces. They can dedicate spaces up by the front door for people to pick up carryout, so that they can get into the lot, get there, and they don't have to park on the shoulder. So, you know, I think we're trying to accommodate worst-case scenario. You know, I think, you know, we didn't see anything, that night was, believe me, I've never seen a parking lot that crazy, but it was still only 160 vehicles. So, you know, I think the 166 should, should get them what they need. There's no guarantee, just like there's no guarantee that traffic's going to be one way on I-55 when you go downtown versus another. Traffic varies, but based on everything we've seen, in almost every condition, that should be acceptable. If it's not, you know, they can valet park some extra spaces in that additional lot, because it, if they push the valet parking out into this new lot, they can double park people in in that if the valet is monitoring that. So that actually gives them more than the 166 spaces if it's being managed that way. And it should alleviate the need to actually bring cars down here to the village. So, you know, that's, you know, we're doing our best to study. We got a lot more data. You know, a lot of this study has changed since it went to Plan Commission in December, because we just collected this stuff in the last month or so. So the question too, about the number of seats per parking space per code, the 380 isn't actually, to my knowledge, that's not the actual capacity of seats in the restaurant. That's the number of people. That includes employees, people waiting in the waiting area. I think there's only about 260 seats, actual seats in the restaurant, which divided by three is 88, so. So, I think that's, I mean, unless there are any questions you guys have for me, I'd be happy to answer, actually, you guys.
Anyone from the council have any question for any of the petitioner's consultants? No.
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 Thank you. So, at this point, I think we have to deliberate and do our job in terms of reviewing the criteria for the petition. So, the criteria listed out for us. Does anyone have any question about the petitioners meeting these criteria?
Let me just, excuse me, let me start off by saying this. This is the council's chance to talk. There are children in the audience that clearly don't know how to behave themselves. I would ask that, baby, you put your big boy and big girl britches on and just shut the hell up while we're talking. That would be a friggin' good start.
That's inappropriate. That's not how you talk to others.
Did I ask you, did I ask you anything? Did I ask you anything? I am not going to engage in a deliberation with someone who doesn't know how to control themselves. So, let me say this. Our job as a council is to determine whether or not the applicant has made a prima facie case sufficient to overcome any objections thereto. It is incumbent upon us to look at the statute and the criteria set forth therein. To the extent that there are public interest considerations, we will address those after we have determined whether or not the statutory criteria have been met. Once we have done that, we will make a decision based on the totality of the record and not a slice or component thereof. That, folks, is how we deliberate here at Payless Park. So, I took an opportunity to look at the case as it was filed, and I'm going to tell you, it was a mess, okay? You couldn't make hunch or tails of it. It was garbage, and it was rightfully rejected. They came forth again with a different proposal and brought it before the plant commission. And I looked at some of those plant commission meetings, and the abuse those folks took was unimaginable. There is no reason to behave like an idiot and not giving people an opportunity. These people, they're not paid. They're an advisory board. They're your neighbors who come out of their houses and give up their all in free time to address concerns and then bringing those concerns to us. You may not like what they have to say, you may disagree with their opinions, but there is no reason for you to have the gall and the audacity to abuse them during a public meeting. Yeah, the rules weren't real bright, but they cleaned it up. Now, absent us asking them to raise the dead, make the blind see, or the lame walk, there's not much more we can ask of them. They have bent over backwards to accommodate what was requested. Is it perfect? No. Community outreach would have been a lot better, but it works two ways. You have to be receptive to what is being said. And, you know, there's always ways to cast dispersions on someone's good name and character. And I've heard some character assassination going on in here this evening, under the guise of, oh, well, this is just our position. Yeah, okay. And then privilege, when a black man makes a facial expression and someone has the audacity in a public forum to ask him to explain himself. No, no. It ain't that, it ain't that kind of party, people. It's not. And the children, and the children are still talking out of turn. When you don't have anything important to say, then you make noise. And so, mayor and council members, I have reviewed the application. I do not believe the opposing parties have been able to overcome the burden put forth in the prima facie case. And in that, in light of that regard, I am going to vote to approve the application as modified and presented here this evening before us. And that's all I have to say on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed.
Does anyone else have any comments, questions? So, I'll just say this. When Hackneys came to us about six or seven years ago and said they were going to retire, a real estate broker came to us and said, oh, we thought we'd like a Quickmart. Quickmart would be a good use for this property. And we said, no, I don't think so. So, we represent not just everyone in this room, but everyone in Payless Park. We have to think about the fiscal responsibility, fiscal viability of this town. We have to think about it all. So, it's not just who, the majority of this room. There's a lot of people that we're representing that are not here, and we got to speak to those people. And that's what I've done for 16 years. Anyone else have any questions? Was that a motion?
I will make it a formal motion, if I can find it. I move to approve PC 2022-02, a petition by Wu and Tran Payless Park LLC, requesting approval of the following on modification to an approved commercial plan development in the B1 Limited Retail Business District pursuant to Chapter 1274.05, and commercial construction and landscaping review pursuant to Chapter 1461, and to direct the village attorney to prepare the necessary ordinance, and I would humbly And I would humbly and respectfully seek a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, will the clerk, manager, please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
I've served on this council for 16 years. 16 years. I've brought you what I think is the best police department, I'll say, in Illinois. At no time have I ever heard such denigration, such personal animosity directed to the citizens of the Village of Payless Park or the council of the Village of Payless Park. That might work in Chicago, but we don't play that way here, homie. We respect people for what they bring to the party. I vote yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes.
And motion carries. Information and Updates Public Works and Streets Recreation Report. Nicole Milovich Walters?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have no items on the agenda. I just have some announcements. Our spring recreation guide is live, so make sure you sign up for spring rec programming as some classes start next week. New additions include youth tennis, pickleball, and puppy picassos. Visit our website to view the whole guide or stop by in the rec center and pick up a physical copy. We also have coming up on Friday, March 10th, our family movie night. We'll be showing Minions: The Rise of Gru. The doors will be at 6:00 PM open with the movie starting at 7:00. It's a free event, no registration necessary. Just come, maybe bring a squishy pillow or a blanket to sit on if you'd like. Coming up on Saturday, April 1st, we have Brunch with the Bunny. So hop on over for an excellent lunch with the bunny, followed by our annual egg hunt on the village green with over a hun, no, a thousand eggs. Registration is required. Brunch starts at 10:30 AM. The egg hunt and other activities start at 12:15, and the event will conclude at 2:00 PM. So please sign up now, it'll be a lot of fun. Also, coming up in the spring, we will be doing our spring fishing derby back in partnership with the Forest Preserves of Cook County. Angler check-in will begin at 8:00 AM with fishing starting at 8:30. You can bring your own pole or borrow one from the rec department. And lastly, I want to thank the residents of Payless Park for their generosity. A couple weeks ago, after the earthquakes in Syria and Turkey, I had put out a request for, please bring items, coats, boots, socks, blankets. It's winter over there, they need things. We are still collecting items. This past Friday, we filled an entire truck and brought it to where it was going to the cargo shipping container next and getting shipped overseas. We're still collecting items. You can bring them to this building or to the rec department for the next two weeks. So I appreciate everybody's generosity, and please continue to do so. And that concludes my report.
Building and public property, Commissioner Wade?
Thank you, Mayor. Avoid damage to neighborhood underground utilities. Please remember to call Julie at 811 before any digging projects. Most sewer, water, gas, electric, and telecommunications services are buried underground. A simple call to 811 will allow Julie to mark utility locations on your property within two working days. Please respect the marks and dig with care to avoid personal injury and damage to underground utilities. Again, Julie's services are free. Make sure that anyone doing work for you is registered with the village and has pulled all necessary permits. The building department is here to help you, protect you from unscrupulous individuals. Call us at 708-671-3730 to verify if a contractor is registered with the village. And finally, permits. We have processed eight permits from February 7th to February 21st, resulting in $1,675. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Public Health and Safety, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start with the police activity report from the 13th of February of the year of our Lord 2023 through the 26th of February. We had 2,026 calls per service. That's about 1,000 a week. That's a little up from our normal volume, but not terribly different. Nine citizen assist calls, an additional 15 case reports, and nine accident reports. Must have been slippery out there. Unfortunately, adult, arrested an adult, no juvenile arrests, and no impounded vehicles. Made 64 traffic stops, 22 moving violations, an additional 45 speeding tickets, and eight additional adjudication tickets. So that's what the Payless Park Police Department has been up to over the last couple of weeks. I just want to remind the citizens that there is a service that we offer here at the Capter Center and the Police Department in terms of a place to enact your transaction on Craigslist or Facebook Marketplace or whatever. There is a 24-hour monitored spot directly across from the front doors of the Capter Center. It's got a sign in front of it. That's available to anybody, free of charge, 24 hours a day, although we have some thoughts about what time of the day you ought to consider completing that transaction. It is video monitored. You don't have to give the police department a heads up that you're gonna be there. And we'd ask a couple of things. If the transaction doesn't go exactly according to plan, don't leave the stuff there because now we're gonna have to deal with it one way or the other. I'd also ask you to trust your instincts. Don't go alone. Don't meet in a secluded area, and for heaven forbid, don't invite strangers into your home and then wonder what the heck happened. Be cautious when you're buying or selling high-value items. Again, these are all pretty common sense sort of things. And as my mother told me, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is too good to be true. So again, feel free to use it. I use it when I sell things on Craigslist or whatever. And should you ever need the tape or the recording, it's not tape anymore, but should you ever need the recording, you can call the chief or ask me, and we'll make sure that you can get a record of what actually happened. Chief Miller?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thank you for your service, sir. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Accounts and finances report, Commissioner Reed.
Yeah, Mayor Mahoney, I have a whole lot to say, but in the interest of brevity, I'm not gonna say anything. I don't have enough report this evening.
Thank you. I have no report. Clerk Aragoni is not here unless has nobody's report. Manager Beam?
I have nothing to put in the order.
Thank you. Announcements, the regularly scheduled zoning-
The meeting's not over, folks.
The regularly scheduled Zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled for March 8th, 2023 has been canceled. There will be a special meeting with the village council, Plan Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals on March 8th, 2023 at 7:00 PM for a planning and zoning training workshop presented by professionals via the Illinois chapter of the American Planning Association. The Stag High School musical boosters will be hosting Art for the Season, Arts and Crafts Festival, the weekend of March 18th and 19th at the high school. This is a wonderful event showcasing many arts and crafts. Vendor booths, lunch, and food sampling, raffles, and entertainment. Adult admission is $3. This annual event helps raise funds that support music programs at Stag High School. Flyers in the Capter are in the Capter Lottery, and information will be on the village Facebook and in this week's E-News. Village Payless Park is incredibly fortunate to have such wonderful schools and enjoy such community support. Thank you. And that's the end of the announcements. Anyone from the audience would like to make any further comment about anything? Hearing no such requests, I seek a motion to adjourn the meeting. Some moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, will the clerk, manager, please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you all, and good evening.
Thanks for coming in.
Democracy is not pretty.